Ladies and gentlemen, it is seven o'clock, so we will begin. I'd like to, once again, welcome all members of the public who've made the effort to come out on a very blustery and wet evening to hear us discuss this issue of the local plan. I do have some words I need to say around recording of meetings. If you would like to film, blog, tweet, or take photographs of the meeting, you are permitted to do so without causing disturbance to the meeting's proceedings. A designated area has been set out to allow you to do this. Please be aware that you are not permitted to move outside the designated area as this may disrupt the meeting. A protocol which governs this activity has been placed on the table for your information. Please also be aware that members of the public who are not part of the meeting have not consented to being recorded. Therefore, please do not include them in any recording activity. Thank you for your cooperation. So, first item on the agenda, apologies. We have apologies from councillor James and we have councillor Oxley in attendance, will have. Thank you very much, welcome councillor Oxley. Do we have any declarations of interest? Councillor Payne.
My husband is an enrolled 120th people in the local plan, so I spoke to the monitor officer who said it's not appropriate that I should prepare just for transport access.
Thank you very much. Any other declarations? Thank you. Petitions, deputations, and questions. We have a number which we will be taking. There is a time limit for each, five minutes. We are taking them in the order in which they have been received. So, could I please ask for Mr Drabble to come to the table and to introduce himself?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Richard Drabble, I'm a chartered civil engineering project director. I first lived in Rutland from 1969 to 74, and I return to live in Rutland in 2000. The question which I would like to ask relates to one out of a dozen possible greenfield sites, put forward by Whistondine landowners, and is denoted as O9A, and most of you have a photograph, and I'd like a photograph to show this particular site which gives context. And this site provisionally allocated into the local plan. To facilitate clear understanding, I will summarise the context and then ask the question...
But could you move to your question?
I will move to the question.
Sorry, could you move to your question, please?
Yes, okay. May I give half a minute of context first?
No, you've introduced yourself, I think that is sufficient context. We understand from your tone and who you are, and that's all that needs to be known. I think we just want a question now, please.
Okay. Given the facts of the context which I would have explained, the key question is why does the local plan seek to develop and thereby to harm this historical landscape, especially when there are other sites available? Within this question, why are there errors in the emissions in some studies?
Sorry, Mr Drabble, I hate to interrupt you again, and apologies for that, but you do have to read the question as submitted to us, please.
I see. Okay. In that case, I will do so. I've tried to put in some context to make it easy for people to pick up.
Would you like a copy of your question?
Hello, I'll be here, thank you. Okay. All local and national policies seek to preserve and conserve landscapes with historical and heritage value, including the National Planning Policy Framework, Rutland County Council's policies, and Natural England's policies, and the draft local plan itself, especially where other sites are available. So, again, why has Rutland County Council proposed to develop and thereby to harm or destroy a landscape on this site, where a well-preserved and high-quality medieval ridge-and-furrow landscape is a prominent heritage feature when there are other sites available? The Historic Environment Records Office confirms that this is a site of Selected Heritage Inventory for Natural England, reference LE7796, with high significance because of its heritage value with well-preserved medieval ridge-and-furrow landscape. Contributing to this, why has Rutland County Council failed to correct some important mistakes in their landscape sensitivity and capacity study after they have been advised in writing, since corrected inputs show that this is a low-to-medium-capacity site, and this leads to a different ranking of sites for allocation? And further contributing to this, why does the sustainability assessment fail to recognise or describe an account for the historic and heritage nature of this site's landscape? That completes the question.
Thank you very much. You will appreciate that it is a technical and detailed question, and as a consequence, I have asked officers to prepare a response which I will read out now. As chairman of the Growth Infrastructure and Resources Scrutiny Committee, I must advise the person that I was not involved in the production of the papers before us tonight. However, I have asked the officers who were responsible to provide a response which I am reading out. The planning policy team replied to Mr Drabble on 19th of August 2019 regarding his comments as follows: "Your concerns were forwarded to the consultant; subsequently, they revisited the preparatory work undertaken during the preparation of the landscape sensitivity and capacity study of land around Whistondine. The consultant responded, 'They were happy with their assessment of Zone W2 in the report, of which site WHI/09A in the draft local plan forms apart is accurate and robust. The area that the council has identified as WHI/09A is similar in character, landscape sensitivity and capacity as the majority of Zone W2, which is relatively extensive, extending along the western edge of the village. The report acknowledged the different characteristics of the southern parts of the zone, but in general, Zone W2 consists of a number of small-scale, relatively flat, regular, rectilinear paddocks, separated by mostly tall dense hedgerows with hedgerow trees, where ridge-and-furrow is a distinctive feature. The landscape character approach is used to assess landscape sensitivity and capacity to accommodate development. This considers the often complex interrelationships of natural, cultural, social, perceptual, and aesthetic influences, together with consideration of settlement form and pattern and landscape value. The consultants were making their recommendation to the council of assess landscape sensitivity and the capacity to accommodate development by using the landscape approach, which considers often complex interrelationships of natural, cultural, social, perceptual, and aesthetic influences, together with taking into consideration the settlement form and pattern as well as landscape value. All these factors were taken into account when prioritising land for potential development.' The report does acknowledge the presence of the well-preserved ridge-and-furrow system around most of the village. In accordance with the village's site statement, this should be preserved where possible. However, any new development on the edge of the village is likely to affect ridge-and-furrow to some extent, which must be balanced with all other potential effects. For example, the report also acknowledges the main focal points within the village being the windmill and church tower, views to which should not be affected by new development. A judgement has to be made in prioritising areas for potential development on the order that these can be brought forward for development in landscape and visual terms. There is often little to choose between some zones in terms of overall landscape sensitivity and capacity, although the assessments may differ on the impact on specific criteria. So, WH was assigned a slightly lower capacity due to its more open-exposed nature, where new development would be on land above 125 metres, the approximate height of land within WIN/09A, likely to create a new harsh-built edge that would break the skyline, have an adverse impact on the setting of the village and the countryside, and impact on sensitive views to the windmill and church tower. The assessment of overall landscape sensitivity and landscape value is similar for Zone W2 and Zone WH8, which incorporates WIN/02 in the draft local plan. But on balance, a slightly higher capacity is allocated for Zone W2, recognising the presence of trampy trees and hedgerows, which provide enclosure and would help to assimilate new development into the countryside, limiting impact on the setting of the village. Mitigation should ensure that visual intrusion of new development within WIN/09A into the countryside is acceptable and keep views retained." And they go on, saying, "Hope you find this explanation helpful in understanding how landscape capacity was considered and landscape areas prioritised for development." That is the answer to the question. Your question and the answer will be appended to a minutes of this meeting, because I don't expect everybody to have taken that all down at the rate I was speaking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take all of that on board. Most of that I was aware of before, because it's been under discussion. And may I have one point of clarification?
You can have clarification, but it will have to be after the meeting. So if you'd like to email out through, we will get it for you.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I now call upon Mr Gareth Jones. We will be making a deputation. You have five minutes from beginning to end.
Starting from...
When you start.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is James. This deputation... Oh, sorry, I just introduced myself. My name is Gareth Jones, I'm a resident of Weston, and I'm a professional risk, crisis, and resilience adviser of over thirty years' standing. So, the first thing is, I sympathise with the committee's time, duty to scrutinise this.
So, Jones, could you please get to your deputation? We've got a lot we need to get through tonight.
So, this deputation is about scrutiny related to the local plan. At the last scrutiny meeting, I raised some serious concerns about, you know, the risk to the lack of trust in the council. And if you looked at this document, we feel that the local plan, the way it's written, leads to an increase in magnitude and probability of that risk, because the cabinet is continuing to follow a course that really doesn't have public support. The local plan is being transformed from a successful and supported plan to pretty much to a go-now-and-strategy. And there are major risks to the county budget, delivery of effective services, and for no benefit to Rutlanders. It's difficult to see the benefit. So, to properly scrutinise the proposed plan, you know, you need some tests, you're going to have to have some tests to apply to this. And I think you've got to have the resources, time, expertise, and consultational stakeholders that you need, in other words, to be able to do the job. In my last deputation and this deputation, I referred to the Good Scrutiny Guide. I'm on your side, so I've given you some tests to apply. The first one is, are you able to do your job in scrutiny? It's got to be conducted in a strong and supportive political and organisational culture, one in which you can be forensic and you can be robust, so you need to be able to answer yes to that. The question I pose to you is, are you comfortable that there's no negative behaviour impacting scrutiny? In my role, I've seen many crises, I've worked with people in crisis, and I've worked...
So, you have to read what you've submitted to us.
Oh, I do apologise.
Please.
I will stick to the script.
You've been in unscripted favour so far, but you're going off it now.
Okay, sorry. So, you have to be comfortable that there is no bullying, inappropriate pressure, conflict of interest, or corruption in the system. This is the Good Scrutiny Guide saying this. Have you amplified the voices and concerns of the public accurately? Do you understand the depth of negative public feeling against the major change in policy from a successful and supported policy to a major, larger developments in Rutland's stance? What is the evidence? Is the need proven? You have to pass that test. Risks attendant adopting the plan are understood. Do we fully understand the risks, the irreversible impacts, reputation and financial, and the attendant resource requirements on taking on this plan? Again, you have to answer yes or no. Are the benefits clear, and are the risks worth it for this plan? Have the benefits been identified fully in this radical change of policy? It is radical. Does this plan enhance Rutland, improve our services, and live up to the values that drive our special county? So, I'm asking you this question. Will you be proud of the county, you know, changing as proposed? I think really the sum up for all of these five tests that you really need to be able to answer an emphatic yes to is that if you can't answer yes, you have to take action. If you have doubts, you've got to make recommendations to the cabinet today at this meeting, and if you can't make your mind up because of this pack of snow, then you have to think about the look-back test. The look-back test, you know, you need to be secure, because you'll be on the scrutiny as well.
You'll stick to the word you have submitted to us. I said, you need to stick to the word you have submitted to us.
Oh, I did make a pun. So, if you need more time, you must secure that, and ensure there's proper activity designed and scheduled to ensure you can do the job. You need to be secure if the look-back test is a problem.
You're out of time now. Thank you.
Okay. Lovely. Anyway, I hope that helps. It's designed to help, it's not designed to be obstructive.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your deputation. Panel, you are entitled to ask questions of deputies. Does anybody have a question? I would remind you, or I would suggest to you, that questions actually are rhetorical, so I don't expect anyone to answer them. Anybody got any questions? No? Thank you very much.
Okay, I hope it helps. Thanks.
We now move on to the deputation from Mr Smith. Could I remind you, Mr Smith, to stick to the wording that you submitted to us?
Will do.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Smith. I am chairman of North Dufflin Parish Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this deputation. The definition of scrutiny is the careful and detailed examination of something in order to get information about it. The pre-submission local plan was published towards the end of last week, all nine hundred and sixty-six pages of it. I have the Bible at home, and the Old Testament variant has less pages than that. I might add that after two thousand years, it's still been scrutinised. I don't think I'm alone in being sceptical about how anyone can make a careful and detailed examination of this document in the time given. I have attempted to read through this document as best I can in the time available, but I'm sure I have missed many important details. I have not been able to cross-reference all the evidence space that apparently backs up the recommendations made. One example is the Sustainability appraisal for the Local Plan 2018-36, beginning page 349. This document alone requires detailed examination to appreciate its significance. For instance, it doesn't quite dismiss ballpark, as the pre-submission local plan suggests. This pre-submission local plan has a great deal of useful information within it, and credit to the officers of Rutland County Council for its production. It is also about the whole of Rutland, and both deserve fulsome scrutiny. However, it is heavily biased towards Sir George Barracks. The Spatial Strategy for Development, O39, paragraph 48, states: "The new garden community", he ordered, "will deliver a significant portion of the county's housing and employment development." The 2016 Government Guidance on Locally-Laid Garden Village Towns States: "We expect experience and interest to demonstrate a strong local commitment to delivery." Cross-reference that to question nine, page 75 and page five, on the consultation responses to the local plan. The question was, "Do you support the proposed changes to the housing requirements set out?" It states, "A high proportion of residents, ninety-five per cent, do not support the proposed changes." And the response of RCC, "No, Gid." One would have thought that needed more recognition than that. This significant negative response should be subjected to significant scrutiny as to the reason why, and this will take time. In the Local Government Association Guide, the County's Workbook on Scrutiny, it states: "Fundamentally, all scrutiny work must add value. It must make a positive contribution to the lives of local people, and scrutiny committee members must be very clear about how their work will do this." To make a positive contribution, you, the scrutiny panel, need sufficient time. I then end with the following hope: scrutiny works well when the council's executive uses it in a positive light, and has an opportunity to improve council performance. Scrutiny's effectiveness will be reduced if the executive sees it and aggressively critical, which will lead to defensive behaviour and make it difficult for scrutiny to influence change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Members of the panel, do you have any questions with Mr Smith? Thank you very much, Mr Smith, for your time. That is the end of the deputations for this evening. We did have a question at short notice, and I would like to ask Cathy William to come and read out the question.
I'm going to read that.
All right, Mr Mill. Can I remind you, Mr Mill, to read the question that is in front of you and not half of it, please?
Got that. My name's Norman Mill, chairman of councillors. You'll be delighted to know this is quite a short question. Roger Ransom, in his recent presentation to a parish council forum, that was last month, repeatedly emphasised that we should count this time prior to the consultation period on the local plan, 10th February to 24th of March, as additional time to read and digest the thousand-plus pages on the local plan so we can come to an informed decision. With this in mind, I'd like to ask if the members of the scrutiny committee can honestly say with hand on heart that they've been given adequate time to come to the same informed conclusions, considering the fact that they only have approximately eleven days to complete what has been suggested by Mr Ransom, taking all the eight weeks? If the answer to that question is anywhere near no, then can I respectfully ask that this committee make the following two full recommendations to Cabinet? Number one, the extension be given to this scrutiny process. Number two, an extension be given to the public consultation period to bring it in line with the eleven-week period that was suggested that the process would take. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr Mill. Now, most of the public, who may not be used to these meetings, the questions are actually questions of the chairman, and this question is largely about process. I'm sure members of the panel may wish to comment in this meeting, or not, they may wish to go away and reflect on it. But as it is a process question, I would like to ask the chief executive to give the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The legal requirement for the publication of committee agendas and papers is five clear working days. The agenda and papers for this scrutiny meeting were sent out on Wednesday, the 8th of January, providing six clear working days plus a weekend, so it actually exceeds the statutory requirement. The decision about publishing the local plan for Regulation 19 consultation is a decision of the full council, it's not an executive decision, and therefore the constitution does not require it to go through the scrutiny process. This is an additional opportunity which has been provided for members, with a greater opportunity to consider, question, and understand the plan and its evidence. The council will take place on 27th January, the same supporting papers will form the agenda item on the local plan for that meeting. This means that all councillors will have the documents for eighteen days, with twelve clear working days plus three weekends, more than twice the statutory requirement.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr Mill. I therefore move on to item number four, questions with notice from members that none have been received. Thank you very much. And now I move on to the local plan, which all members have had. As is my practice, I will invite the portfolio holder and/or officer, his choice, to introduce the documents you have in front of you, and then I will invite members to ask questions and make comments. Mr Smith, will you introduce the officer?
Apologies.
Thank you.
Chairman, apologies, it was a staff structure. It'll be a very short introduction, in the sense that this has been a document long in the making. The first piece of work started back in 2016 with issues and options paper, 2015, my apologies, 2015, for my time. 2015 issues an options paper, which was consulted upon. We then had a draft local plan in 2017. And I have to refer to that time, that the particular issue of St George's Barracks was far from clear in terms of information, there was a distinct lack of information about it from the MOD, as is they are the developer, and therefore the local plan in 2017 was approved by Cabinet, was subsequently scrutinised in November 2017 by a scrutiny committee, and also it was consulted upon. One of the issues of the consultation at that stage was the fact that the St Georges had not been considered within that particular aspect. Therefore, in 2018, a further consultation, a small consultation on just the sites and not the policies, was carried out. not the policies, was carried out. At that point, in 2018, August 2018, forty-five minutes before the consultation was due to close, a letter was received by County Council, hand-delivered, and in that it was a request for the council to consider Woodfox, the potential development of Woodfox. Being that it was presented, and under the Habitat Regulations Assessment, there is a requirement to consider all reasonable alternatives, and therefore the County Council decided that that was a reasonable alternative and should be considered. Meetings were held, obviously, with the people involved, Woodfox, to gather information. Further works were carried out during the period from August 2018 until the back end of last year, in gathering all the evidence both for Woodfox, St Georges, and all the other sites that are proposed to you. But I have to point out that it's not just about the allocation of sites. This plan is about the policies, and there are very many in here tonight, as you'll have read, that will identify what sort of development we want within Rockland over the next fifteen years. In particular, there are issues around the design of houses, and aspects of climate change, use of water, use of minerals, a wide range of issues, and I hope that members will in fact look at those as well as the site allocations. It's not just about site allocations, it's about the whole plan, and I'm asking you to look at that receipt. I think I can finish at that, Chair. Eddie and Sir Ransom, so.
I think the key thing for us in terms of presenting this plan is to meet the test of standards, and so it's gone through a rigorous process in terms of its evidence base, it's gone through a rigorous process in terms of the appraisal and assessment of the science. It is supported by Habitat Regulations Assessment, it's supported by Sustainability Assessment, we've carried out the quality impact assessment, screening and such. It conforms to national policy, it conforms to its legal requirements on that basis.
Thank you very much, Mr Ransom, Mr Brown. Members of the panel, I'm sure you have a number of questions. I'll start with you, Mr Beggy, I'll start you first.
Very kind of you, Chair. It is a long document, and to show that I've spent time, I have taken time off work every day since this was published, and screw myself away in the members' room at the back, going through this page by page, so I do feel very well versed in the detail. My questions are mainly around the process that gives this plan validity, and how do we make this plan sound, because that I think is what's key for the council going forward. So I've tried to distill them down into ten questions, which I'll go through one at a time from now. Firstly, how did the portfolio holder demonstrate to me and the committee and the public that the full local plan process has been adhered to, and that any legal challenge will not find fault? Has legal advice been taken on the plan process to ensure this happens?
Do you want to ask all your questions, and then we hand them over? Would you like to do it one by one?
One by one, which would make more sense.
Thank you, Chair. I prefer one by one as well, so I think it's more appropriate to answer each question, understand the answer, and if it's supplementary, then clearly the council can ask that at this stage. Thank you for advising me in advance of the questions, and my colleagues, so we've been able to make sure that we have, for all of the questions, clear answers. The evidence base which underpins the local plan has been commissioned by the council using technical specialists recognised as experts in the field, and that's very important to understand. I think I said at the last scrutiny meeting that the strategic housing market assessment was done by a company called Justin Gardner, who are recognised as the number-one company in the country for doing that work, and recognised because of their expertise and the quality of their work. And that's the case with all the consultants we've used, with all we've used, and the technical specialists. They are professional planning people comprising experienced and dedicated officers. And I've considered the implications or recommendations of all the technical advice, evidence, to prepare a plan which is considered sound, and at this point Roger Bedarly, sorry, Mr Ransom Bedarly, in accordance with the tests set out in the National Planning Policy Framework. The development of the local plan has included appropriate legal advice at each step, including the process forward to date, and I'm confident that we will in fact achieve legal compliance at this stage, and that's all we've been fully complying with. So I think we have checked, we have made sure that at each stage, this has been checked out from a legal standpoint, and that's been external legal advice, not just from our own legal officer. The potential for a legal challenge is always a possibility, and not something we can prevent. We can work and mitigate and reduce the risk of a successful challenge. The legal challenge process looks at procedural issues in terms of how decisions are made, and whether a decision is made reasonable and proportionate. It is important, therefore, we put the council in the best position to defend any such challenge by demonstrating that the process that has been followed is in accordance with the law and the guidance, and that all the evidence before us. Examination in public process is designed to consider these issues as part of their process. This period, sorry, the statute process does not, however, include a six-week legal challenge period after the decision to adopt the plan, following examination in public. This period does provide the opportunity for people to challenge the examination process and the inspector's decisions, again on the same basis, procedural, reasonableness and proportionate decisions in light of the evidence available. It's possible, therefore, that the decision to adopt a plan could be challenged. Any challenger would have to demonstrate they have an arguable case in order for the case to be heard.
Thank you. Are you happy with that answer?
I have a supplementary question at the back of that. What, if you can quantify this, is the financial risk to RCC of any legal challenge, and have we got a contingency for that happening?
It is difficult to estimate any specific valuable legal challenge, depends how deep the pockets of those who are challenged wish to go, and how far they wish to go. However, having said that, the council does have the reserves for legal challenges, and I think you will see that in the budget papers that come forward to members.
Thank you. I just have to respond to that.
Yes, thank you.
I am not inclined to keep going back over the ground that we've covered, and so as a consequence, is there anybody else on the panel who's got anything they wish to ask, or any comment they wish to make on this very specific point? Fine, thank you. Mr Beggy, your next question then.
Question two. A recent letter from yesterday, back from the Woodfox bid, quotes from exempt papers, which is commercially sensitive. How has this happened? What steps being taken to see progress?
Thank you, Mr Beggy. We don't think that the papers are actually exempt. In particular, there is a paper related to employment that is on the St George's Rockland website. It is in fact, unfortunately, an early version of a paper written in November 2018, and if you looked into the recent evidence, it has been updated.
On that point, the comment I was referring to was about the infrastructure and the question I'll come on to later about having to maintain overspend on infrastructure, which was a condition potentially which was exempt.
I think, Mr Beggy, that references the Cabinet report, the scrutiny panel report, where it doesn't mention in that paper, I think in paragraph 5.2 it was, was it 5.2? If you could be tight, I'm going to find it online.
Perhaps I will not waste time now, I'll refer to that tomorrow.
Sorry? It's 5.2, but in fact the next paragraph in the scrutiny report, the Cabinet report actually explains that, and I think that's where that's been taken from.
Thank you. My next question is actually vertically supplementary to that, but it does go on that condition. If the HIF fund does not cover the total cost of the infrastructure, how will that shortfall be met?
Slightly careful here, since, as you know, we had the HIF conditions were part of the scrutiny panel at the last time, and we did discuss this to some extent. The risks to the council is decided not to do, sorry, the HIF money is not to do quality infrastructure, it's to do specific infrastructure, and in particular, infrastructure first, that's the whole point of this HIF money, is for infrastructure first. It is to fund the gap in the normal development cost between Section 106 and SIL funding. The local plan is now subject to a whole plan viability study, and this includes assumptions for normal development costs, so site preparation, construction costs, fees, developers return, et cetera, plus SIL and 106 costs. And that's covered in chapter seven, the viability report, updated on December 2019. This has assumed that a Section 106 payment contribution of £26,000 per unit for Section 106, in addition to the full SIL payment, which is estimated to be £16 million at today's values, but each year the SIL value is increased by the, a figure related to the cost index, building cost index, thank you. This is in addition to the HIF funding, and the HIF funding has been identified specifically for chapter three of the law.
Thank you, Mr Brown. I think that was a very thorough answer, and does actually reinforce what was said to us when the HIF bid was being discussed in this chamber back in January here. Does anybody else have any questions pertaining to HIF, bearing in mind that that's actually in parts of the debate, might be coming? Mr Beggy, is there any more supplementary, or?
My question nine is vertically supplementary, so I'll just go straight on down. If, when I say if, St George's Barracks did go ahead, can I confirm infrastructure such as schools, doctors, roads, et cetera, will go in upfront, and how is this viable at such an early stage of the development?
I think, first of all, there's information in the Infrastructure Development, or the Information Delivery Plan, which has been published along with the papers for the meeting on the 27th. The policy H2 requires a detailed master plan to be prepared and approved by the local planning authority prior to consideration of a planning application. This requires the provision of a range of community facilities, H3, policy H3, paragraph three, and the phasing plan, H3, paragraph 10, which ensures that on and off-site infrastructure is provided ahead of or in tandem with the development it supports. In addition to policy H3, setting out the planning applications must be in accordance with the master plan, and that is the evolving master plan, I'll stress that, it's not even new master plan, I understand there were some questions around that, but it's the evolving master plan that's already been created and revolving with the subgroups that are currently in operation. It must be in accordance with the master plan, approved under policy H2, which is in front of you, and must meet eighteen criteria, which includes the need for these community facilities, the H3, C and D, and the need for all on and off-site infrastructure to deliver in a timely manner. H3R is set out in the phasing plan. The proposed policies and the approach to the George's development in the local plan is considered to be sound. The existing school at Edith Weston, for example, has capacity to accommodate quite a few additional pupils in the short term arising from the initial phase of housing development, and this will be considered as part for determining phasing plans required to these policies. The award of the HIF fund covers the initial infrastructure and site works, with itself or unlocked development, funding to deliver key community facilities in the phase of development. It is not expected that community facilities will be the only things built in the first phase, as with employment land, there's a need to ensure that some homes are also built in the same first phase, to ensure that there are some children to go to the school, and patients for the health sector, and people to make the shops viable. If there are no homes, these facilities will not function. So it's a question of phasing between the homes and the facilities in that early phase of development.
So just on one other thing clear on that, we are saying the infrastructure, such as the doctors, the hospitals, the doctors, the schools, et cetera, will be built upfront and won't be an afterthought at the end of the planning.
I'm happy to answer that. As you know, in many of these large developments, sixty per cent of the development takes place before facilities of that are provided. In this case, the objective is to deliver those at the early stages of the development, and in particular, the road infrastructure, which comes back to the county council, will be one of the very early phases in the development, if the development goes ahead.
The answer is yes, yes.
For the benefit of the public who are here, Mr Brown made reference to subgroups. The subgroups are the subgroups of the St George's Project Board. There are a number of them. Parish council representatives sit on them or have been invited to sit on them, and they are looking at issues such as highways, the design of the site itself, the master plan, as was mentioned, and also employment. I thought I needed to clarify that from the public's point of view.
Can I just add to that? Because I think it's important, the design and layout, it's transport and public transport, it is health, wealth, and health, wellbeing and dementia, and it's also education. There are five subgroups in total.
Yes, you're quite right. I was trying to do a quick summary of the sort of thing we were looking at rather than the detail. Can I ask whether this is in relation to the question that Mr Brown's just answered, Miss Robson?
Well, I've been asked to ask some questions on behalf of councillor Jones, and this one does touch on that.
I want to take them, I want to group them, so if it's about that, yes, then that's okay.
Because councillor Jones is concerned with regards to affordable housing.
We haven't touched on affordable housing yet, we are still talking about health, facilities, schools, that time. So if anybody's got anything further on that, then fine, but if not, we'll let Mr Beggy get to the end of his. You will get your chance, Miss Robson.
Thank you. I'm a great lover of Rockland's environmental, so why are we so confident that SGP has no impact on the Rockland Water side?
I'm going to invite, do you mind if I invite someone to respond to that?
No, I'm perfectly content with that. The Heritage Regulation Assessment is an appropriate assessment, it's not just the screening report, so it goes into the details that the screening report requires. It's been prepared on behalf of the council by Woodton Environment and Infrastructure Solutions, who are technical experts in this field. They have followed the statutory process that set out for undertaking an appropriate assessment, and they liaise with Natural England, who are the statutory consultation body for the Habitat regulation assessment, on both the screening and the appropriate assessment work. The conclusions of both Wood and correspondence that we have from Natural England, is that the, any impact on Rockland Water SPA, which is what we're looking at, can be mitigated through policy requirements? Their responses have informed the policies that have been written and included in the plan. The work that's been provided by Wood demonstrates that the plan is both sound and legally compliant with that HRA process, and Wood will provide their technical expertise to support us through the examination, should it be required.
Thank you.
Just a supplementary, this goes off the back of a document that was circulated yesterday about the environmental impact. You mentioned Natural England in your conversation and in your response, which is also in this other document, as noted. What involvement does Natural England have, and are they happy that we're going to have no detrimental impact on Rockland Water?
So Natural England, we're consulted on the screening report, and that was earlier last year, and provided some feedback about policy mitigation, and that corroborated their response to the 2018 consultation on St George's, in which they'd recommended some policy wording. They have further been consulted on the initial findings of the HRA appropriate assessment report, and their correspondence is actually included as an appendix to the HRA report. Obviously, they will be consulting for Regulation 19.
Just something clear in my faintest mind, so not just the paid consultants, but also Natural England are happy that there is no detrimental impact on the Rockland Water side?
That's correct, at this stage, yeah. That's correct, at this stage, yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on that issue? Mr Beggy, if you can, and if you also have your source, please, your head.
Why do we feel St George's employment land is attractive to potential employers? What is being undertaken to secure the employment opportunity? Will the employment be from day one to day this throughout the process?
Mr Hensley, you answer this one first?
I believe so. The local plan proposes a total allocation of fourteen hectares of employment land as part of St George's garden villages, and this is based on the local plan evidence base and meets the long-term anticipated requirement for employment land over the plan period from twenty thirty-six and beyond. Both the Hope and Valbert assessment for the local plan in December two thousand and nineteen, and the BBP regeneration employment strategy in December two thousand and eighteen, demonstrate the employment land is delivered as part of the overall St George's master plan environment. We do recognise that there's a need for public sector investment and intervention in order to bring forward and deliver the employment zone at the outset of the development and as part of the infrastructure-first approach, and we're working closely with partners such as Greater Kenya and Greater Peetborough, combined authority, to identify and secure the delivery of the employment to St George's.
Thank you. Substantial, Mr Beggy?
Not quite sure, answer the question. My question was, why will employers find the area attractive, and what has been undertaken to act...